And the project manager at the appropriate time. So we want this to unfold in a reasonable way so that information is provided and people have an opportunity to digest it, to ask the questions to their satisfaction and get good answers back. So that's really nice.
Mariana Kaleba, what's up, audience?
So what I have handed out today is a copy of the report that we voted on in the ad hoc special review committee meeting two weeks ago. That's been distributed. I also have handed out a copy of the renovation as new estimate provided by Downs Construction and a copy of the Aswagatchie Fire Station construction estimate based on the construction documents. And that's really for background information. I would encourage the board members from both boards to review the information and get yourself up to speed so that at the appropriate time downstream or tonight you'll be prepared to ask questions that you think are relevant to either the need to build Aswagatchie and/or the cost or the timeframe associated with doing that. So I had presented this a little bit to lesser detail last week to the Board of Finance. Again, tonight was intended to be more detailed presentation, but then we decided to move it out a little bit. So what I have here is basically a packet of information that provides a high-level general overview of the Aswagatchie Fire Station as designed. The design of the station is complete. We have construction documents, both the drawings and the specs, that can be used to go out and put this to bid. It can't go out to bid though until the bonding resolution is approved or submitted and approved. Hopefully it gets approved. So I'm going to go through real quick for the sake of people here, the general features on the first floor. And I want to start off by saying the building, which there is a picture of it here and it probably would be a cycle if we had it on a poster here, but we will let the...
Hey Bob, I'm sorry to interrupt you so soon, but maybe because lots of people are looking at us and we have all this stuff.
It's all the website.
No, there was no package for this evening. There was no agenda backup.
I think the letter that we sent in to the Board of Finance referenced that all this information is on the building committee website. The information that is presented here...
This was posted yesterday at 3:06.
I'm just referring to the letter that I submitted to the...
You're correct, there was no backup posted. Thank you.
But it is on the website by virtue of talking with David Campbell this morning or guest confirmed through conversation. Where is it on the website? If you refer to the letter, it's under the building committee. There's a special section that has the estimates, it has this report. It's under the building committee meetings. No, I think it's a special area. We don't have the ability to show it on the screen there. I don't believe so much we got a hold of David.
I know you don't take public comment, but can you explain in number two if that is two separate committees or and it is like the length of that committee name? Is that one committee or is that two?
There's two committees. One is the special committee and one is the building committee, one preceding the other. So it is on the town's website under the building committee. So all these documents as well as the drawings that have... Are you identifying where they are?
It's right on the homepage.
Right on the homepage, okay.
Of the town website.
Can I resume or no? Okay. All right, so what I wanted to point out, and again, and it would be helpful and will be at the upcoming official presentations, the building itself is a very modest building. It's not a Taj Mahal, it's well-designed, it's got some nice architectural features without being overly embellished or being very expensive. It really is a nice balance between satisfying the need that Waterford has and the fire department has while also representing the town in a very positive light by virtue of the architectural flourishes that it does have. And you'll see that when you go to the website. So I apologize for not having it as part of the reference in the agenda. But I'll go through real quickly what's basically in the building. So on the first floor, there are bunk rooms, pretty much all the things you would expect in a fire station. Bunk rooms, a day room, a kitchen. The kitchen's got residential. Equipment does not have commercial equipment. It's a training room, there are offices, there's an exercise room, bathrooms, a decon room, gear locker room, and apparatus space on the first floor. There is a small mezzanine, although it's really a one-story building, there's a small mezzanine for mechanical storage. It's a mechanical man, there's some storage up there. Not a habitable space. So how is the building constructed? Steel framing on a concrete foundation, typically fiber cement siding with brick veneer and a cast stone accent band. Shingles are architectural asphalt. The roof itself is solar-ready. So the idea is if the town would like to explore solar power in the future, the roof has been designed to accommodate that. The building committee felt as though it wasn't a prudent thing to do at the time, so we did not go through with asking the architect to design it into the building. The floors are epoxy coated concrete, they're tile and they're carpet covered. The electric system is basically the lighting, power for the entire building, the PA system, fire alarm, security system, site lighting for outside the building, and it has a backup generator. And what's interesting is the HVAC is primarily what's called a VRF or a variable refrigerant flow system with radiant floor heaters in the bays. So some of the energy efficient features in the building, the VRF, it's very high efficiency, it requires 10 to 50 percent less energy to operate the building than a typical HVAC system would. The hot water system uses temperature maintenance cables in lieu of hot water return. This minimizes the amount of hot water that gets sent down the drain. All the plumbing fixtures are low-flow. As I mentioned, there's radiant floor heating in the bays. There are energy efficient windows which are thermally broken, meaning they're double or triple pane. The insulation in the walls is considered continuous with no breaks, which limits heat transfer. It also moves the dew point further outside, which makes moisture less likely to have an effect on the overall building. So moving condensation outside of the building. As I mentioned, the roof is solar capable, the town wants to explore it in the future. All the occupancy spaces have sensors and dimmer lighting controls to modulate the use of electricity. If people aren't in the building or aren't in the spaces, they'll automatically dim or turn off. And throughout the building, we have LED lighting. So total size of the fire station is 9,988 square feet, which is substantially smaller than the existing fire station or the fire station that was designed previously, probably to the tune of about 4,000 square feet smaller. So based on the final design drawings and construction drawings, our construction manager, Downs Construction, has estimated that the cost will be about $10,300,000 to build the structure. Those are hard costs. So then when we add in soft costs, which are the furnishings, the PA system, the security system, all the IT equipment, anything that would go into the building, the total estimated cost to build an outfit, including a 500K allowance for a traffic light in the event that there has to be one there, comes up to $12,552,393,000 or 12.6 million overall. So to put this into a comparative light, we also had the project manager do a estimate to renovate as new, and that's one of the documents that I've handed out. And that one, that estimate to renovate as new, comes in at just over or just under 11.1 million at $11,92,735, which does include the contingencies and the soft costs. So the comparative numbers are really 12.6 to 11.1. And as I mentioned, the one thing that remains undetermined right now is the need for a traffic light. That's still under discussion pending trimming of trees adjacent to where the station is now. When that happens, the director of traffic will be out there, I believe also with the director of fire services. The director of traffic will make a final decision as to whether the new light or a new light is required. So the rest of the package is really pictures. I'll just bring to the board's, Board of Finance's attention, the second picture is a new one from last week. And that reflects the trust work that is actually quite a nice little architectural detail on the inside of the bay. And if it's painted black, it'll pop, it'll look pretty nice. It's also a very convenient, very smart way to address supporting the load in that area. So I thought it was prudent to point that out as being one of the sharper amenities. The next couple of pages are basically the elevations from the front of the building and from the side of the building. And then the last one is in essence a floor plan that lays out basically the bays, the bunk rooms, the day room, the meeting rooms, kitchen, so forth and so on. That's all laid out right there. Now, we do have the full-size drawing, I didn't bring it with me tonight, I did bring it last week. We'll have it at the Board of Finance meeting, the next, the formal Board of Selectment meeting, formal, I guess, when the bonding resolution comes forward, it would be at those meetings and then ultimately at the RTM meeting as well. So people will all have a formal presentation where they can address the architect and the project manager and ask questions that they feel are important to them to justify in their minds why to vote for or why not to. The next five pages that are in here are a little bit different from what the Board of Finance saw last week. They represent an excerpt from the report that basically talks to the five fire station model, history and structure of Waterford's fire stations, talks to why five stations matter. And lastly, the case for the Aswagatchie Fire Station. They're all covered over five pages. So I can go, I'll go over the highlights real quickly without really getting into details. I'll leave that up to the requisite boards to go ahead and read through it themselves. So you know, while the projections of Waterford's overall population currently around 19.5 may remain stable or in some cases, there were two portrayals of population that we were made aware of. The initial one was from two years ago, was from a 2016 review by the Census, which suggested that the population might decay over time. The most recent projection that came from our planning department shows that it's going to stabilize, okay, at about where it is and/or they provided a lot of the developments that are ongoing in the area to suggest that perhaps we'll actually see an increase in growth. So we went from a position of potentially the Census in 2016 saying that it was going to go downhill to one saying that it looks like it's going to flatten out or potentially go up based on the more detailed information on the developments that were provided to us by Mr. John Mullin. So as the population shifts, things that we're considering in the five-station model really are the growth in the senior population, right? The population's getting older, that's a population that's going to be more dependent on emergency services than say younger ones, especially as you are, especially as it reflects on emergency services as opposed to fires, right? One of the things that we know about the fire stations, the fire services, the emergency responders, they do a really good job saving lives and the ambulance does a really good job taking those people that have been saved and delivering them to the hospital for follow-on aid. So emergency services and saving lives are a big part of the fire department's responsibilities. And even in the context of safer buildings and maybe the frequency of fires is not as high as it once was, say 50, you know, 30, 40, 50 years ago, the need to provide the fire, the emergency services is ever-present. So in the report, we also cite the recent development activity, a lot of it's going on. The town size and diversity, we have about 37 square miles that features rural, suburban, and some commercial properties, each of which requires kind of a specialized, unique response given the nature of the development that's there. So things that are going to maybe shape the mission of the fire services in the future are the significant commercial entities. We have Dominion, that's a fairly substantial one. We have the proposed data center, again, fairly substantial, and the Crystal Mall complex, which looks like it's going to be coming back online. So all three of those, not to mention the airport property, which we don't mention in the report, but could be something that pops up in the future, are going to most likely result in more commercial development, higher populations. So the changing building patterns that we're faced with now, so we're looking at higher population densities, and if you look over at Willetts Avenue, you have multi-story structures over there. That's an amazing development. It's really taken on legs from when I first started, when I first saw it started. The other thing is with modern-day building comes more fire-resistant materials. And with more fire-resistant materials, you're going to have exotic situations when they do ignite or when they do get exposed to heat, you're going to have serious or more serious challenges with burning of synthetic materials. And that's something that our fire department needs to be aware and prepared for. That's fire-resistant. Fireproof. Fair enough. So the expanded scope of emergency responses, structural fires are the vast majority of responses nowadays, but we're, the fire department is routinely responding to hazardous material incidents, severe weather events, service calls, medical emergencies, and unfortunately false alarms. So I guess that comes with the territory. The distribution of service, when you look at the number of calls by fire station, they're fairly uniformly distributed between the five fire stations. And the response times are generally very similar as well. So as we look at why fires, five stations matter, I'll hit on those real quickly, some of them may resonate. I look at this as being a hearts and minds discussion, so there's going to be some subjective factors that will weigh in and influence people's hearts and then there will be some objective ones. Making the determinations on a new fire station and other aspects of a fire station requires kind of a full review of the subjective, the semi-quantitative, and then the quantitative and maybe the qualitative. So there's a whole range of inputs that are required to make the decisions. And that's why you hire a director of fire services to interpret all that information. So things that are important to us, response times, volunteer retention, I mean, that's something that if we can continue to retain volunteers or we can drive up volunteer retention, that helps the town out from a cost perspective. As I mentioned, strategic coverage, you've got the Crystal Mall, Dominion, you have 95, you have 395, 85, you have Waterford Schools, the Town Hall, community center beaches, Nynek River, Thames River, all uniquely spread out over those 37 miles. And one of the things that is probably most significant, at least to some of these boards, are the insurance rates and the ISO ratings. I'm not prepared to discuss what an ISO rating is tonight, the director of fire services may touch on it, but maintaining the fire services rating that we have now is important and actually lowering it is even more important. So I will tell you this, that theoretically, if you don't build Aswagatchie and it somehow goes dormant, the insurance rates will go up. If you do rebuild Aswagatchie, the insurance rates will come down. So that swing between not doing anything and then doing something can range anywhere between, say, $400,000 to like $1.4 million. And that's an annual basis to all the residential taxpayers and also the commercial taxpayers. More important to the commercial taxpayers, it sets up, when you have a strong ISO rating, it sets up a desirable community. So people in business will want to build and operate their businesses here when you have a stable and a low ISO ratings. They run from 1 to 10, lower is better. Resiliency and emergency sheltering, having five stations distributed throughout the town allows for that. The infrastructure readiness, Aswagatchie will be ready. The other fire stations are in conditions that at least appear based on the capital plan that had been submitted by the previous fire services director to be maintainable and probably not with the same kind of consequence that we're seeing with Aswagatchie. Emergency operations, just in general, Aswagatchie is on Route 1, that's a state road, that's going to be maintained, as is, was it 156? There's a couple of roads that will be maintained that are not town roads, so it's an important location. And the five-station model has been a successful model that's served the town for 100 years. It's worked, it's worked well. You go back and you look at the previous fire studies that have been done dating back to 1997, when a station location or number of stations comes up in conversation, the conclusion is always five stations is the right number and the locations are correct. So to take a step away from that would require an awful lot of rethinking and a fair amount of risk, okay? Because one of the things you want to preserve, as the fire professionals know, are the response times. Response times contribute significantly to the ISO ratings, location of stations, okay, contribute to that significantly as does staffing. So you have to have location and you have to have staffing to get response time. So the case for Aswagatchie is pretty much basically a subset of that. It goes on, I can get into some more of this, but it really is pretty much similar to what I said previously, but it complements different things. It supports the vision of the combination fire department. Arguably, it enhances recruitment and retention. It's basically the town's saying to emergency services that you're valuable to us, we're investing in you, we want to give you the right tools and the right accommodations to do your job effectively. It's a very strong message, just like when we invest in the schools, we give the kids new schools and we give them the tools and the message is, hey, we're investing in you, we want you to do your level best. I think the same message holds true for volunteers and the career firefighters. So our long-term financial interests are protected. Most of you know that we have a grand list of about 43, 44.3 million, which is substantial. I'm not sure the breakdown, but let's say hypothetically, it's 80 percent residential, 20 percent commercial. That's a fairly substantial amount of property that needs to be protected, right? And having the fire stations out there are important to protect the property. Emergency preparedness, I mentioned that. This does align with the community plan, with the plan of conservation and development. It's an investment in the future, it's a commitment to public safety, and it demonstrates strong community leadership to go forward with it. That's all outlined in the report. And there are, there's a number of statistics in the report that back up the things that are said here. So I'll leave it at that. I wanted to touch on really the reasoning behind it. I know the ad hoc report had been something that's been long awaited and thanks to committee members, Rich Muckel, Susan Frisco, Tim Condon, Matt Keedley, me, and then also the advisory led by Director Chris Haley, we were able to get it over the goal line in the last couple of months. A lot of work was done on it. So we're happy with it. It's a decent summary of the status of fire services. It does provide substantive recommendations that are mostly geared towards management, but they're also tempered with the knowledge that we have a new fire services director who needs his opportunity to try to do what he thinks he needs to do for the town, right? For the department, fire department. So just good practices. In our meetings with the director, he had shared with us ideas that we thought were really spot-on and reflected an investment of knowledge in the town. So we're encouraged by that. This helps him while not binding or tying his hands in any way. As you all know, this is a board, the committee was made up of five volunteers representing the different governing bodies. We did have one expert from the fire perspective, I'll say Tim Condon, he's a professional firefighter, a career firefighter, is very knowledgeable. The rest of us on the committee are all laypeople, so we're doing the best we can with the information that's provided. The information that we used came from a couple of primary sources, largely from the previous director of fire services, and then also from part of the advisory committee also provided information. And it's all laid out in the bibliography that we put together for the report. So I think that's kind of it. As I mentioned, this is just, maybe it's whetting the appetite, laying the groundwork, giving enough information for the time when the architect and the project manager come before you and give you a little more discussion on the facility. This will help set the table so you can ask questions. And that's all I have for tonight. Stand for questions. I should really defer to the rating expert in the room to be our new director of fire services, if there's anything that you would like to add to...
No, just as general commentary, I think I got to walk in on the very tail end of a committee that was in place for a long time, and I was glad to see the fruit of their hard work. I know that there's, it generally helps us point a compass, but you know, we're glad to get this out here as the first official presentation. And what I'm most excited for is that the two of them kind of go hand-in-hand in this presentation, the closing of the report, and looking forward to our new future with the new fire station. So we're glad to get these public presentations underway. I look forward to hosting a few more in the coming, in the coming months, open to the public. I'm glad that we have a couple of months ahead of us to answer your questions, take your input, you know, show off the hard work that this committee, as well as the ad hoc committee, have put into getting us to this point. So with that, I'm open to questions from the board and I look forward to your questions and interacting with all of you out there soon enough as we get some of these public... Oh, you don't have to remove all my stuff from the computer, okay, don't worry about it. As we get some of these, some public open houses in town, all opportunities open to you in the future, so. Thank you.
So are there questions or comments from the Board of Finance on the committee chair's presentation or about the package in general? In bear in mind, there's going to be at least one other opportunity to address at least So there's a couple of things. First, so this package, like these three items right here, this kind of represents the building committee's output, right? Except for the back part of that.
Right, that's more part of this. So is, I am in a concern, it was brought to my attention, I think, is this the draft report? It says final report.
It is.
It's the final report.
It was voted on at the July 9th meeting or early meeting. Is it final until the RTM accepts it? I mean, I... We voted, well, put it this way, we voted it out of the committee to deliver to the RTM. So exactly what that means legally, I don't know.
Okay. So I guess I'm going down, I'm wondering if it's nice to have this as the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen, but part of me says that the charge for this, for the review committee was the RTM. So I'm just, I... So I'm just, I guess I'm just surprised that, you know, we get to see it now, they'll get to see it later. It seems, seems...
I think it's frequency of meetings, it's targets of our... That's pretty much what it boils down to.
Okay, okay.
It's not going to change for the RTM meeting, it is what it is, it's the final report.
So it's on the agenda for the next RTM meeting on August 4th?
I, that I think it is, that you can ask, Dave Camp, I believe, asked it this morning, it is on the agenda, yes.
Okay. So, again, any further questions or comments?
I do have one question. Did the committee chair and any members of the committee have a chance to look at the letter that was written by Mr. Lenzou?
We actually discussed it at the last building committee meeting, yes.
Okay. What is your opinion of his estimate, which is significantly lower than $12 million?
So, I'm not sure that I'm in a position to really comment on his estimate. I don't know anything about his company. I don't know if it's similar to Downs, has the same capabilities, has professional engineers, has an estimating team. I don't know, so therefore can't comment on it. I would leave the judging of that estimate by the Downs estimate up to the record reports. I know that it was discussed, but there was no decision or nobody really weighed in on it as to anything as to veracity of the estimate. In fact, there was some challenging as to the methods that were used to create it. But I'll leave it like that. It's not my charter to try to judge the quality of that estimate.
Okay, thank you.
I just got this tonight, then.
Yeah, no, I understand, I just...
It's all, yeah, introduction.
Right, it was, yeah, it was a briefing. I guess the, from a Board of Finance perspective, I guess there, you know, there's the... I think maybe the boards, if they're not already aware, obviously this will be funded via bonding. So there will be a bond resolution coming through. So, this is the amount that will go to bond for the fire station in your estimation and the committee's estimation?
Correct. The number on page three of that package is the number...
Twelve point six.
It'll be twelve point six, twelve point five five two, yes. That'd be the number that I believe the Director of Finance will be using.
Okay. All right, so, and again, all of this, all four of these are on the website?
Correct.
Front page, all the way to the bottom.
I'm sorry, oh.
Front page, all the way to the bottom.
On the town website. Okay. So, well, thank you for this, thanks for your work, the committee's work, and...
Yeah, I just, I want to ask one question. It's not necessarily appropriate, well, it's not appropriate to Oswagachi, other than the fact that you brought in the five firehouses and how it's important to maintain five. So, because the committee addressed five several times, was there any discussion about how to address the issues in the other four firehouses? And, you know, what they were and how we would pay for those?
So, yeah, the recommendations from the report, okay, were to go about the assessing of those private stations in a more consistent professional way. In other words, if you look at how utilities and public works address their specific tasks, they'll bring in an engineering team. An engineering team will review and together an estimate for what needs to be done. There ought to be a consistent approach for evaluating the condition of every fire station, noting repairs that need to be made, and then also adding a priority of when they should be made, and estimating the basic costs. They then can get fed into an overall capital plan that people can look at, evaluate, and weigh in on. Right now, we don't have that, okay? Up until now, and I believe Director Haley's got similar ideas going forward. We basically had estimates that either were provided to the Director of Fire Services or he himself put together. There's a lot of very round numbers that talk to, this house needs this, this one needs that, and they're thirty thousand, forty-five thousand, a hundred and fifteen thousand. There's not a lot of engineering detail that had gone into any of the assessments. So, similar to how you would treat the fleet plan, which is at the same level of attention, and that is to go back and characterize miles on all your vehicles, conditions of your vehicles, how much money's been spent from a maintenance perspective, corrective as well as preventative, and then plotting when you're going to buy new vehicles. You want to adapt that same kind of philosophy and level of detail and fidelity to how you treat structures, how you treat the buildings. That answer your question?
Yeah, it would seem to me that the buildings are not, are different from fleet plan. I would hope so, at least. And because of what we just saw now, and I know we've been working on Oswagachi for many, many years. I was a child, I had hair when we first started this. So, the question would be, besides the Fire Services Director, should we have a, similar to the school system, a building committee? An ad hoc building committee for all fire stations? That would put together and analyze all fire stations along with the Fire Service Director to give an estimate of where we need to go and how much we need to... Because, you know, I'm guessing, but I'm assuming that it's not going to be a capital plan. It's going to be, you know, when we look at this whole issue, perhaps when everything gets together, it may turn out to be a bonding issue. So, I don't know. I mean, I'm not an expert, I just only hear rumors and people talk to me. So, so I'm, you know, I don't want to guess, I would like to know, but I also don't want to put that whole issue on the shoulders of the Fire Service Director, especially when we turned over, and I know you're here for forever, but we've turned over Fire Service Directors. So, you know, I'm, just a suggestion on my part, because I'm concerned about the overall cost to the town as we look at firehouses.
And I would agree with you, I would not want that on my shoulders either. Similar to what Mr. Teneskey said, I believe in the past, there was a lot of, as he so artfully demonstrated, that type of estimating on things. And I believe, and I agree, that the best decisions are informed decisions. And I would like to undertake, you know, professional assistance in assessing a true stock of where we're at with the mechanical systems, with the facilities that we have in place. So I fully agree with you, Mr. Feeder. I would personally not like that on my shoulders entirely, and ending up with round numbers and guesses. I would like to enlist either a civil engineer or some type of, and generate a multi-page document that will probably take a long time, and will take a long time to fulfill, but we can take a prioritized approach to it and begin this long road forward together as we invest in the buildings. I know that that has not been going on right now. And I do think that one of the, I think one of the things that's often overlooked as far as this and the building, the new fire station, I think it's often probably not even given the credit that it deserves, in referencing what Mr. Teneskey said about the hearts and minds portion of this. I think it's, I'm late to the game, and I wasn't here for that transition, but I think something that this building comes built into it with it is the hearts and mind approach that the Oswagachi Fire Company has granted this town, the opportunity to reinvest in itself. And I don't know if that's really, the gravity of that shift is really given the credit and honor that it deserves. That a century-long organization has decided to do what's best for the town by allowing us to move towards town-owned and town-managed buildings so that this situation does not happen again. I think that those members probably aren't given maybe the credit that they deserve in making such a bold decision for their organization to do that. And I'm heavily indebted, to be entrusted with making sure that this works out and works out best for the entire town of Waterford. And I think that as we move forward, that should be the focus, is a much more in-depth analytical approach to making sure that the buildings are maintained, funded properly, and working hand-in-hand with companies to make sure that the town is in position to do that.
Thanks, Bill.
Yes, Bill? I'm going to branch out, since we got the Fire Service Review Special Committee Report, which I haven't read, obviously. But it brings in, my first job, when I got on the RTM back in 1989, I was a member of the Fire Public Protection and Safety Committee. And since I just come from being XO of the base, the chairman said, okay, you get to do evaluation of the fire trucks and determine what kind of life they should have. So it took me about nine months, going from station to station. Now, back in those days, the water tanks were steel, or metal of some kind. Sometimes it's questionable metal. And so I found that the end of life on the fire trucks was when the tanks watered out. Now we don't, now they have fiberglass tanks and so on, so that's not the life-ending thing. But, our question, the question is, is I don't think we've done a look at the fire equipment from a town-wide view in a significant amount of time in the, well, in the thirty-plus years that I've been involved. Except in the fleet plan. And then it's just substituting what truck it is. The only plus using the fleet plan is that you no longer have the individual fire company come in with their custom-made, custom-designed truck that's unlike any other fire truck in the world. And this is what they insist they absolutely have to have. They've gotten the trucks into a, you get the standard model of whatever it is that you're looking for, whether it's a ladder truck, a pumper truck, or whatever. But the question is, do we have the right spread and the right trucks for the calls that each station normally gets? So, I don't think we've ever done a little good study on that. So unfortunately, you need to put that into your bucket of things that need to get done. And the other thing, of course, that trucks are useless without people to drive them and man them, or person them, I guess is probably a better term now, since we have both male and female firefighters. And so, the volunteers seem to be shrinking by the minute. And so the total number of volunteers that we have these days probably can barely man one truck in the town, much less in each individual fire station. So we need to look real hard, and this is a tough nut for the town to pick up in whether we have to go for a more professional fire service with paying the fire, more firefighters, and paying the paid firefighters, and paid part-time firefighters, because there are not enough volunteers. So the town needs to really look at that. And so I think, hopefully, that's a to-do in the Fire Services Special Committee Report. So we got trucks and people and houses, which covers just about everything, but... And so it's a daunting task for the fire director to, and he needs help. And probably not from us amateurs, he needs help from somebody that knows what they're talking about. Because I'm basically tangential, sort of sitting on the sidelines, watching what the fire service has done over the past thirty-plus years. And my involvement when I was able to do training for Demis Regent for what other fire services are doing and compared to what Waterford is doing. So, I think that's, you have a long to-do list, Director Haley. You need to decide which, what your priorities are, maybe you got to mix and match them, and how much help you need, and maybe there needs to be another committee. I hate to say that to the RTM, another committee. That, or maybe the persons that are on the Public Protection and Safety Committee can take that on. We need to look at that in the sermon.
Any other questions or comments from the Board of Finance folks? No?
Sermon is well-received and much appreciated, Mr. Shinnon, always.
I'll take it back to the first selectmen to see if the Board of Selectmen have questions or comments they'd like to...
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Just first, I just want to thank the committee, the building committee, for all your work, all your hours. This is yet another meeting you're here. I will say that after watching from afar and not attending and staying in my lane, what I did realize is that we have, we're at a turning point in the town. We are now at a turning point of this town to go, are we going to go and make sure that all of our residents are safe? That all of our residents have response times? That all of our firehouses can handle employees being in there 24/7? Are they located where residents feel comfortable? If I say I'm not okay with this firehouse, does that mean we just close it? Is that the option? And then you're at elementary school at Oswagachi explaining that? So, everything we do is political, there's a consequence. And I hope that there's no consequence to what we're doing right now. And that's making sure we make a commitment to fire, making sure we make a commitment to staffing, making sure we do that. We've spent the last 20 years focused on education in this town and schools. It's now time to shift to personal safety, public safety, first responders. It just is. We have a nuclear power plant in this town, and we act like we don't have one. Our firefighters, our EMTs, the first responders, there's 3,000 calls a year. And it can happen right down the street from every single person in this room. Yet, well, what if we're not operating out of that house? How long is it going to take? It's not a decision that I feel comfortable with, so I'm thankful that the committee took this so serious. That you're saying this is what it will take to actually get our fire, one, just start with one, and get that going, and then we fix up the Jordan, the Cohansen, the Quaker Hill, the Goshen. These residents and our residents, I do believe, still...
Not necessarily in that order.
So, exactly. But I do think that when Bill's listening to me talk, that's impressive. And I do believe that we do feel the same way about public safety. And this is a responsibility that we kicked down the road since 2000 and whenever with this Oswagachi Building Committee. So, anyway, I just want to thank the committee for all your time and all your efforts. I want to thank the chairman for the tireless work. You made a lot of friends, you'll get a lot more Christmas cards to share, I'm sure. But thank you for doing this, because it's the first time, like Greg and I, get a chance to hear anything, really. So thank you for, like, actually hosting this, so we can just listen to what is going on and get all the information, so we do have this information with Suckman Muckel, he was in all the meetings. So I appreciate you doing this for us, so we can listen to this, and I appreciate you. And I will ask our Board of Selectmen, if you guys have any questions for the chairman or the Director of Fire Services.
You have the Richard.
Yeah, Rich, do you have any?
I'll let Greg, I've been a part of both committees, so I have a lot of the details mentioned by Chairman Teneskey. The thing that I'd like to just reiterate is the fact that the report and the building committee have done a tremendous amount of work, the report states that. I very firmly believe that five companies, five stations, with current locations are the right picks for the town, right services. I do believe that Oswagachi is in very need, you know, great need of, really, a new firehouse. I don't believe that refurbishing the current firehouse is an option. There are a lot of things which Director Haley can refer to as far as apparatus is concerned, and ways of bays and that sort of thing, for rotation of fire equipment that gets the right use and an equitable amount of use across the board. So I'll defer to Mr. Attenasio for his comments or questions.
Thank you, Suckman Muckel.
I, I've been removed from this for a while, I was on the Ad Hoc Fire Committee for some time, before I came on the Board of Selectmen. So I've been out of the picture, and, well, things are gonna come to vote eventually, and you want to be able to vote with confidence and understand what has happened. So I'm appreciative of what's happened tonight, and seeing the yield of everybody's efforts. With that said, I guess I'm just trying to get better informed, so I may just ask some questions, if that's okay? And just try to get some answers on some of the very simple and benign, other, maybe a little more complicated. Also, just like to quickly comment, I think it's possible to do multiple things at once. I acknowledge that Asagachi, you know, needs, needs something significantly, there needs to be significant investment there. I think the question we need to ask as a town is, how do we, how do we get there? To the point where the only remedy is a twelve-million-dollar firehouse? And how do we avoid that in the future? In particular, you know, regarding some of the earlier comments with the other firehouses. So I, for one, would like to see the Director supported in that endeavor, and take a head count on what we need to do in other firehouses, get ahead of major expenses like this, because they're quite costly to the taxpayer. I think that's a good idea. With that said, I'm just gonna kind of run right into things. So in the presentation, I'm gonna, well, there's two real things we're talking about today, right? We're talking about the Fire Services Review that's getting reported out to the RTM. And then we're also talking about the Building Committee's efforts in the report, right? So I'll just start with the building itself. The glass, you said double or triple pane? Is it double or?
I believe it's double pane. Broken, broken windows would mean double or triple, they're just like air gap between, believe it or not, it's a backing gap. I believe it's double. The architect can answer that question at the formal presentation.
Yeah, I think that's an important one to nail down. I used to be in the frustration industry, and you know, I think when you're making the investment, it's important to do it right the first time. I think, you know, the cost differential on the triple pane isn't, you know, ridiculous. I think it is a worthwhile investment, because you will have to put that, that investment over time. Also, along those points, you said solar-ready. I'm not gonna spend too much time on this now, but the sooner we do put solar on it, the sooner we see the benefit of solar in terms of energy costs at the firehouse. The glass on the overhead doors, is that, that kind of ties into my double-triple pane question. I'm assuming, is it single or double pane? Is it insulated glass?
I don't know, but I can find out, send you an email tomorrow.
All right, yeah, glass, overhead doors, probably a bigger ticket item if we go through this. Again, I haven't had an opportunity to look at any of this, so I'm just trying to, top-of-mind questions that are coming to me. You know, because we have glass next to, you know, a heating source and a radiant floor, just to leak out of single-pane glass, you know, we want to be efficient, and do it right the first time. Was there any consideration if there had to be repair to the radiant flooring? How, how do you repair that? What's involved? How do you get at that flooring?
It depends, you know, and I, again, this is a better question, better answered by the project manager and the architect, but it would depend where the problem is. If it's actually in the concrete as part of the distribution of, of the heating system, you'd probably have to excavate it. If it's part of the distribution, you'd be looking at a different part of it.
If it was in the floor and you had to remove flooring, what kind of impact would that have to services at the firehouse?
I'll give, I'll give you my answer, which probably would, is probably better characterized by the Director of Fire Services. I would imagine that you would do parts of the, of the bays, okay, such that you would always have something available, and you would phase it through, much as the construction that's planned for Asagachi is to build the station before you demolish the existing one. So maybe that same approach, but on a
Except you don't have a new firehouse the second go at it, right? You have to find a place to put the apparatus.
Well, luckily, to that, there is one built-in, built-in allotment in the leasing of the building that to store Asagachi's currently owned, privately-owned antique vehicle. We could always displace that for a time being and utilize that space. It's, it's currently, and is part of the agreement of them transferring over the company's property to the town was to allot them space to, to maintain their antique vehicle.
Thank you. Like I said, I just want to vote with confidence in these what-ifs, kind of, kind of wrote that confidence at times.
I'm jotting them all down, sir.
Do we have a decontamination space? Given to Rob's point that we do have a nuclear power plant in town, we have a contamination space, decontamination space, rather, integrated into the design and the tail, correct? I think that does it for my immediate, you know, I'd be more curious about the window package, too. I mean, we are using some premium things, their veneers and hardy board, and I'm curious to know if the wood-clad windows or what the windows exactly are made out of, I know that can really drive things in certain directions.
Can I call a friend on that one?
I'm pulling up the specs right now.
So Rocco is one of the reigning experts in that committee. As is Ted, Ted is also one of the reigning experts in that.
I would look at the window schedule, but I can't see anything on those plans. I don't know if they have a finished schedule or anything.
How we do, we have a big, huge, if you'd like to see it, I'll bring it by your house, you're welcome to enroll in.
Try to do a lot at once, right? And I think that was probably intended this meeting, and just trying to get a little more familiar with where we're at. I can move on, if somebody has the answer, eventually, I'll take it. I'll transition to the report that came out of the Ad Hoc Committee, the final report. I remember some of these things as I, you know, I'm trying to scroll through it here during a meeting for the first time, and I'm sure there's a lot I can find, and I'd have more questions in due time with everything presented here today. But looking at Table 5.3 on page fourteen, current and projected staffing. Yep. It says current full-time staffing, six firefighters, could you explain what that, how many we have on, on staff, and what the six means in the report?
To explain to your question, I'm flipping through as we go. The current, the current on-duty staffing that we maintain is six firefighters per shift. Some of this, some of the, the report was generated prior to my arrival. I know that in the course of this report, the town went to twenty-four-hour coverage. I think in one of the main portions that I've encountered so far in my seventy-five or so days is that there's a lot of linguistic adjustments and things that have to happen as the town has transitioned to twenty-four-hour coverage. So generally, generally, fire departments speak in shift strength, not just total number of FTEs. So I don't know if at some point throughout the course of this, because the committee was, a lot changed in the fire department throughout the course of the committee. But to update you on where we are today, where we are today is twenty-four-hour coverage with a shift strength of six firefighters.
Yeah, I'm looking at the table, and again, maybe I'm missing somewhere, because it's my first time looking at it, but, you know, interpreting that, the town of Fire, Waterford Fire Service that are currently staffed at full-time shows in Figure 12, and the Figure 12 shows we're currently at six. And then it shows we're projected year twenty-nine, twenty-eight, fiscal year twenty-nine, thirty, to go to eighteen. That's eighteen per, per shift. So we're gonna triple the size in five years.
So, so let me go ahead and tackle that one in a minute.
Yeah, that, as I was saying, this was, this was released prior, or this was submitted from the prior Director's staffing model, which I believe this committee started prior to having twenty-four-hour coverage. I think they're referring to total number
This might be an old, old table that somehow got into the final report.
No, no, this was, no, this was the most current staffing plan applied by the past Director of Fire Services as delivered to us in March of this year.
Understood, I wanted to eliminate that possibility in my head. So, again, going twenty-nine, thirty, we're looking at eighteen per shift, right? That's, that's what we're looking at. How many, how many shifts total? Like, let's say I get a number.
Sort of, Ted, again, to, we currently have eight, we currently have eighteen full-time firefighters. Six per shift, we follow a twenty-four-hour and a forty-eight-hour off-schedule. So I believe that, when prior to that, Waterford was utilizing straight-day schedules, then for a very short time, a split day and a split night, and for an even shorter time, a small interrupted schedule, until finally making the, the move to actual twenty-four-hour staffing.
So eventually?
Yeah, so we currently have eighteen full-time firefighters, not on duty.
Correct.
So I think maybe that's where
Or a third of the way there, basically.
Currently where some of that might have come from.
So we have to we have to grow twice over in five years, according to this report.
That would be the previous Fire Services Director's recommendation.
That's
So I think we gotta
It's in the report that you guys just voted on the other day.
I understand, but it came from the previous Director of Fire Services, so it doesn't have the benefit of the new Director of Fire Services weighing in. So how he portrays or sees the future of the department is gonna be up to his assessment.
No, I understand, I'm just trying, I'm trying to understand what's in the data here, and you know, with that said, I would really, as much as the Director may embrace this or not embrace, I'd like him to have his input and, you know, his signature on what the recommendation to the RTM ultimately is, and that means more time. I leave that at everybody else's discretion, but I would think that's understandable.
No, I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of where, where we currently are, what our shift structure is. The twenty-four-hour shift, twenty-four-hour, forty-eight shift, has been adopted, it's been in place for, I would have to defer to someone who's negotiating it, but about a year and a half. You have, you now have, you now have twenty-four-hour, round-the-clock coverage, and now we begin speaking in, adding, adding shift, in terms of shift strength, not necessarily, you know, the town employs ten firefighters, and they're all on duty at once, and then they come back on Tuesday. That's not how, as we, as the First Selectmen stated, in the transition mode that we're in, they, the firefighters you employ now will get days off. Where prior to that, when they were just working Monday through Friday, day only, we could speak of, as to the, just, we could speak about the firepower strength, just as the total number of employees, because when the lights went out, they all went home.
Right, this is constant, six.
Yeah, yeah, right now, yes. So that has evolved up, and, and I'll preface a lot of, in the Fire Services Review Committee, and I appreciate Mr. Teneskey's comments throughout the final meetings is, some of the data that is in here, if not much of it, was captured in a very fluid, very fluid, very dynamic time for the department. So you'll see call volumes that fluctuate, because the ambulances that used to be running out of each fire station got removed. That was in the course of this data span. The change from daytime-only firefighting to then day-and-night split, then finally twenty, that, all of that moving target is trying to be captured within this book.
We have a plan rolling out before there's a plan.
Yeah, the, well, I, well, I think a lot of, I think to comment on that in a general term, I think we're finally deciding to stop being reactionary. And what this report does detail is a, a town that is, that was trying to remain agile in, in adjusting to a very rapidly changing thing. And I think that over my general commentary, I think the, the pan, the timing of the pandemic really struck this department at a, at a hard time. Because you had the ordinance change that consolidated the five independent departments into one organizational structure. You probably were headed on that road, through public, public sentiment, public involvement in what was going on. Drop of pandemic, right, right on the tail end of that big landmark shift. And probably what then transpired over the next two to three years that's captured in this report, throughout the formation of this report, was a department that's trying to remain agile, trying to play catch-up, trying to evolve as the situation evolved or devolved in some regards. And probably, the arrival of this report says, we can get back to the business that we started in 2020, which was, you know, setting the stage for the future. A lot of pandering and poetic whacks in there, but I try and I'm trying to explain maybe some of the, I'm sure you'll be able to find other things that are, that are, that you might want to point out. And I'm glad to discuss them all, I just wanted to frame
No, I'm not trying to assert anything, I'm, again, I'm just trying to understand where, where we, where we are today, and where we're going, where our intentions are, based on this. And like I said, I was on the committee years ago, but not, not yesterday. So, I mean, also, you know, looking at, you know, one of the things I'm concerned about, you know, on behalf of, I think, a lot of people, is, you know, response times. So we talked about this table here, and staffing, and you have six people maybe going to eighteen. What does that mean in terms of other, you know, a lot of focus here on Asagachi, but also, you know, what about the other firehouses? Will they be staffed twenty-four hours? I mean, is that part of the plan? Because if you look at Asagachi, if that's the only one that's gonna be shift-staffed twenty-four-seven, that's the intention. It's fifteen minutes away from Quaker Hill Elementary, it's ten minutes away from Great Neck.
So on, on fifteen, you'll see where we're, where we're setting the, where this report falls in line with a lot of, with a lot of the things that I brought forth in my, my application and interview process, focusing on the staffing of the three, the three Page fifteen in the
Page fifteen in the report. Fire Service Special Review Committee Report.
This one, great.
Yep.
So I, to put, to put some of that in context, I'm actually, I'm actively working as fast as we can to get full-time staffing in Asagachi right now, and it is coming soon. And one of the, I, one of the, again, the reactionary moves was to staff the two busiest stations. It's a, it's a very, you know, for common sense reasons, right? That's where the highest service demand is, obviously, you want to put your full-time staff in there. What that, what the caveat that that leaves out is, is you have full-time staffing backing up full-time staffing in the two busiest regions of the town. So your highest probability of having a call, we put our full-time staffing at. Your next highest probability of having a call, you put your full-time staffing at. Well, the highest probability of having a call is also the highest probability of having another call, backed up by the second highest probability of having a call. So what you have is, is no, no layover support for concurrent calls, and you also lack the ability to bifurcate a town that, though in some areas thirty-seven square miles of land areas, forty-two square miles of area. So by being, by placing full-time staffing in Asagachi, it allows us to bifurcate the town into the north and the south, and help support concurrent calls in the other outlying areas. Because the last thing that we need to do on a regular basis is pull the, the, the full-time staffing away from the areas of the town that they also support, by leaving this gap in the middle of the town. And again, a lot of, a lot of, I, I want to preface a lot of this is, a lot of it may sound as if I'm criticizing anything that was done. But like I said, a lot of what was done were probably the best decisions at the time with the best available data. What you've ended up creating, though, is this leapfrogging of the two career stations crossing the town and leaving their outlying portions of the town. They're, I, I don't want to say, I don't want to be alarming, we, we still have remaining part-time staff and volunteer staff. But I, but the most important thing to me is, is that what we're doing by bringing that central station is we're being able to bifurcate the town to support the outlying areas, and then consolidate the remaining part-time volunteer forces to operate in support roles at those outlying stations. Can our, our part-time staff that we have right now support three stations as they're, as we're trying to right now? No, it cannot. But can we consolidate that staff into one and/or two stations to get consistency in service delivery out of them? Yes, I believe we can. Can we, can we try to reconfigure and redeploy the volunteer force in a way that they, they is not asking as much as we are of them right now? And get a more stable, predictable output out of them? Yes, I believe we can. But as far as the, the immediate approach to staffing, I believe getting Asagachi full-time staffing sooner than later is, is beneficial to all of Waterford, for the reasons I just illustrated in my soapbox right there.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate you stepping into a situation and grabbing the reins and trying to get a handle on everything so fast, and it's refreshing to hear. I, I hear the, you know, we want to man the two most active locations, and that makes sense. There, there is a concern I have, though. And that, there's two things can be true at once, like, yes, that makes sense. But we also have other areas of town we are responsible for, even if they have less volume, and you need to give them equal. Like, life isn't life, no matter where it is. And that's
Yeah, absolutely.
I want to stay, I want to
That, that, and, and I'm glad you mentioned it, because one of the main, one of the main, I, I dare I say criticisms that I've heard is, is why, why Asagachi? It's not the busiest, exactly, exactly. Exactly, exactly. It keeps, it allows us to keep the stations that are staffed in their general neighborhoods, in their general portions of town more often by being there to support that. And you're not pulling, for example, if Jordan right now, that would be the primary support to Goshen, if Jordan has to go up to answer the second busiest portion of town all the way to Cohansy, that is quite, that is quite the distance left between, hopefully, the then freeing Cohansy Company to run back to Goshen. Or vice versa, to the Quaker Hill District, flip that scenario back around.
It's 20 minutes from one corner of town.
Right. So, by being able to, by being able to bifurcate the town at Aswagachi's, well, at the Boston Post Road, it allows us to keep our staffing home much, much more often. Can I give you just a quantifiable number of that right now? No, because the data tracking right now is, again, chasing its moving target. But I believe that that's, that is why the full-time staffing of Ozzy is most important. And being able to consolidate our remaining part-timers into one or two stations would help shore up the coverage in those areas. Best way I can summarize, many pages of text.
All right, I think we'll leave it there. Next question I have is ISO rating was mentioned by the chair of the committee, the fire committee. What is it now and what is our goal? I mean, I don't know, again, maybe it's more aptly positioned to you, director.
So, are you asking what that means?
Yeah, where is our current?
Or what is our current?
No, I know what it is.
Oh, okay.
Well, I have an idea of what it is. But where does our rating now?
So, our current rating is a four slash four X. The four X is a supplemental rating that transitioned a few years ago. They took away partial scores for areas that are at fault, what we could be considering in rural Waterford. So, it's not as applicable to most of Waterford. So, we're currently standing at a four with a total points score of about approximately 67 points total, which results in a class four rating. Anyway, you want me to direct this as far as follow-ups or?
No, no, so we're at a class four. I mean, I'm just trying to understand where we fit in with our peer groups, right? So, and I guess as maybe a benchmark of what we're trying to accomplish one day.
Okay.
Since ISO was brought up as a metric to, as a benefit.
One of, we currently stand just approximately two points ahead of peer group.
We're ahead of peer group.
Just two points, not two classifications.
Okay.
Two points.
So, where do you mean?
We're at a 67. Peer group would be at about a 65.6. I can get you the exact numbers. One of the areas that we are, one of the areas that we are ahead of the peer group, and it was refreshing to me to see, was station distribution. The location and the location and number of the five stations results in Waterford having an 8.96 out of 10. Our peer group average is approximately a 5.1. So, the location and numbers of stations helps us greatly. Our water system in this town helps us greatly to maintain that rating. But I believe that that rating could improve and should improve. Maybe that rating, I have no crystal ball, but maybe that rating is the reason that we haven't seen some of the rapid development of these larger commercial parcels that have remained available. We're always constantly saying, well, if there's development, well, I want there to be development there. And if we can help row that boat, I want to do it. If fire can help row that boat to developing some of those larger commercial parcels that Waterford does have to offer, I want to help do that. And I believe that there are things that we can target internally to get the ISO rating improved. Again, a lot of, we're just trying to cram, I, these things took three years, I've only been here for three months, so I got to try and catch up.
I appreciate you taking the time to respond. I don't have anything else to ask at this time.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? I'm not on the board. I appreciate both of your efforts to answer all these questions on the hoof. Might I make a suggestion? It might help us all if on the website where you have this information, if you could create a link that people could perhaps ask questions that might help you be better prepared when we have the regular meeting, rather than sit there and have people, trying to field questions from people that are asking them as we go along. All right?
Thank you.
Is everyone else on the board of Selectmen? Well, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the board of selectmen. You want to move it? How about you move it? He's always the second.
I move that.
All right. All right, all is in favor? Thank you.
Move, we adjourn.
Second, third, fourth.
Who was second for one minute?